It's it's gonna start soon. All right, it started, Mike.
Okay. All righty, good evening, everyone. Welcome to our second virtual Clarence School Board meeting. Before we get started, I just want to read just the opening remark here with regards to why we're meeting the way we are. So pursuant to the governor's proclamation on mass gatherings, no visitors would have been allowed at the Board of Education meetings at this juncture. So the Board of Ed has agreed to conduct this meeting virtually via Google meeting. So here we are, Monday, April 6, 2020. I'd like to formally call the meeting to order. For the record, all board members are in attendance, and I'll just read that for those viewing. Myself, Mr. Fuchs, Mr. Stock, Mrs. Andrews, Mr. Piori, Mr. Boglioli, Ms. Snyder, Mrs. Sweeney, Dr. Hicks is in attendance, Ms. Silverholt, Mr. Mancuso, and Mr. Michelle. With that said, does anybody have any announcements? Hearing nothing, move forward to the approval of the agenda. Could I get a motion to approve the agenda for tonight?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
And for purposes of the video recording, we're gonna just do a roll call vote. Those in favor, Mr. Stock? For approval of the agenda. Mrs. Andrews? Mr. Piori?
Yes.
Mr. Boglioli?
Yes.
Ms. Snyder?
Yes.
Ms. Sweeney?
Yes.
And myself is a yes as well. All right, so before us, we have the Board of Ed meeting minutes from our regularly scheduled session on March 9, as well as the special Board of Education meeting held on March 20. If there are no questions, could I get a motion to approve the minutes?
So moved.
Do I have a second? All right, we have a first and a second going down. All those in favor, Mr. Stock?
Hi.
Mrs. Andrews?
Yes.
Mr. Piori?
Yes.
Mr. Boglioli?
Yes.
Ms. Snyder?
Yes.
Ms. Sweeney?
Yes.
And Mr. Fuchs, that's me, yes, as well. All right, moving forward, in the agenda that was published on the public session, correspondence was listed as none as this was posted last week Thursday. Just noting for the record, we did receive two email correspondence directed to the board. Both were in support of discussions that the community members had at last month's meeting relative to continuing to keep focus and to the extent possible in current budget situations to continue to invest further in our mental health service positions. Moving forward, we do not have a public comment session. As noted for the record, we did post on the website when we posted the agenda that anybody who had a comment or a question for the board could submit through the website. One of the two correspondents I mentioned came in through that means. Moving forward, does anybody have any unfinished business? I'm not aware of any. Okay, with that, Dr. Hicks, I'll turn it over to you for the superintendent's report.
Thank you, Mr. Fuchs. I'm going to turn on presentation mode. And just ask real quickly if everyone can see the budget presentation at this point.
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, great.
Yes.
So Rick and I are gonna describe, and Rick, Rick, just talk it right over, please. This is the brand new slide here is the one right after the introduction. Some of this stuff came out in the last week or so. There's some pieces to the executive budget not having to do necessarily with money that were positives for the school district. So the first is that the budget, the adopted budget rejected the executive proposal to consolidate categorical aids and fold them into a formula foundation aid. That was something that we were opposed to, and the budget did not have it included. It also rejected the proposal for a new tier for building aid and an adjustment to transportation aid. So those were also things that we were opposed to. It did expand civics curriculum for 12th graders. It did add $10 million in competitive grants for student mental health services. And this will be something that we will pursue as soon as the RFP comes out about how to go about applying for it. And a big one, it did repeal paid time off for voting. If you have less than four hours before and after your work shift to vote, you no longer get paid time off. Any questions on that particular slide, board members? Okay, so I'm gonna keep going with the financial pieces of the adopted budget. Essentially, foundation aid is frozen at this year's level. The increase in the governor's proposal for foundation aid clearance was very small, so it really didn't affect us. The expense-based aids were fully funded across the state, and they were fully funded in Clarence as well. There were two new categories to the state aid run. The first category is called the pandemic adjustment. And in the pandemic adjustment, the governor reduced state aid statewide by a little over $1 billion. Clarence's chunk of that was $533,837. That pandemic adjustment was a deduct in state aid. So the governor froze foundation aid, ran all the expense-based aids, totaled it up, and just like it was for the old gap elimination adjustment, there is now a deduct by $533,000 for Clarence. The good news is, even though that deduct exists, the federal bailout money for the state, which happened to total $1.1 billion, dollar for dollar restores the amount that was reduced by the pandemic adjustment. So they took the money away in one line and then put it back in with another line. That's where the pandemic adjustment and the federal cares restoration stands at this point. So it's a net zero for us. The governor's budget also authorized, and this is highly unusual, and the first time I can ever remember it happening in my memory or in Rick's memory. The governor is authorized to make periodic adjustments to state spending in the event that actual state revenues come in below estimates. So there are four periods of measurement where the state will take stock of the revenues that come in. If they come in lower than expected, the governor's budget director will make reductions. And because school aid is 27% of the budget, it will not be spared those adjustments. The first measurement period is from April 1st to April 30. I think they're anticipating about $880 million in revenue in that monthly period. I don't believe there's any way the state can make that since businesses are closed down due to the coronavirus. So the first cut will likely come on April 30. We do not know yet what mechanism the state will use to enact cuts. The mechanism it used for the pandemic adjustment was Title I formulas. So the cut and then the cares money restoration was lower in Clarence than it is in a lot of districts because we don't get as much money for Title I. It probably won't be Title I related the next time they make cuts. It could be a direct percentage cut to foundation aid. It could be a cut to expense-based aids, but it'll have to be something in the $24 million that we get from the state. So the first period is April 1st to April 30. The second period is May 1st to June 30. Third period is July 1st to December 31, and the fourth period is January 1st to March 31. If revenues come in under estimates in all four of those periods, there's a high likelihood that the state will enact reductions in state school aid in each of those four periods. The way it works is the legislature, the governor's budget director creates a list of reductions. The legislature has 10 days to adopt an alternative. If they don't adopt an alternative within 10 days, the governor's numbers stand.
So Jeff, just just a question on that. So prior to this this authorization that the governor got, like, how was the state able to adjust if revenues, if there was a revenue shortfall? Was it just that the the gap was going to be expected to be small enough so that it could be managed in the next fiscal year as long as the the budget itself was neutral, or was there some other mechanism?
It was, in my recollection, it was exactly the way you described it, Matt. And the state does have fund balance that they can leverage against any type of shortage. The last time I can remember a cut anytime during the school year was in 1990. Rick, you want to speak to it at all?
Yeah, there was a mid-year cut that year, and it was it was substantial. We had to freeze spending, but we didn't have to lay anybody off at the time. And Matt, also part of your, the answer to your question is, just like our budget, the state's budget never really comes in perfect. You know, sales tax isn't gonna come in perfect. Our interest isn't gonna come in perfect. Neither is the state's. So you kind of rely on, you monitor it, that things come in so bad, you have to make adjustments. Otherwise, it kind of flows through fund balance at the end for both the state or us.
Okay, thanks. Yeah, that that makes sense. So essentially, they're giving themselves some extra leeway, given that they expect that the revenues are gonna be seriously off estimates.
They are. The fact that they're doing it quarterly makes it very difficult for planning purposes for us. We know that there's going to be a reduction. We just don't know what the formula will be for creating the reduction, nor do we know if there's a floor for education aid reduction. The CARES Act had language in it that stated the reduction could not exceed a certain amount. However, the CARES Act also opens up a back door. And if the governor makes an appeal to the Education Secretary from New York State, they can, or I'm sorry, for the federal government, they can exceed that particular number. So at this point in time, the people who study this don't believe there's an actual floor to how low the reductions could be. That makes it a little scary. I'm gonna keep going. So New York is predicting a revenue shortfall anywhere between $10 billion and $15 billion. And that's before they ended up paying large amounts of dollars for the coronavirus epidemic. So it could exceed that. The worst-case number right now is $15 billion short. The current coronavirus pandemic has generated 1 to 2 billion in unbudgeted costs so far, and it's likely to get much higher. There is some federal bailout money for that. School aid comprises 27% of the state budget, and the worry is that the state's sales tax receipts or receipts from any business will fall short of budgeted levels and will result in kind of a downward spiral of reductions. So for our purposes, we're going to attack the problem two different ways. First, it's our recommendation that the Board of Education adopt our budget and approve it tonight. The 30-day period will run, and right now, there is no date set for the actual community budget vote. The date that has been floated by the governor is it's going to definitively be after June 1, but they don't have a real date. When they create a date, we'll go backward. Is it 45 days or 30 days, Rick?
It's 45 days to do all the notices, and that's when people start to have their petitions. The petitions are due basically 30 days.
So we should know the first cut, and if we absolutely positively needed to get back together and revise the approved budget, we could still do so at the end of the first period of reduction. But we think the prudent thing to do is to set our number right now and attack the potential reductions one of two ways. First, we have fund balance. We're fortunate to have over 4% of our total operating budget in unassigned fund balance. We get nicked by the auditor every year, but this is the kind of year where having that cushion is a good thing. So part of what will have to be decided by the board is what are we gonna do in terms of backstopping some of the reductions by applying fund balance? It probably is a one-shot deal. It saves us for one year, but from an educational soundness position, we will want to use some of our fund balance to backstop some of the reductions. Secondly, we've already started the process for for the administrators of talking through what are potential reductions. And the building principals are charged with coming up with reductions potentially in their buildings. And the central office administrators will come up with reductions in the other operational areas of the district. If we're gonna make those reductions, we really should make them before the school year starts. It would be extraordinarily negative from an educational perspective to make reductions to classroom teachers halfway through the school year and have to combine classes and do things like that. So our recommendation is going to be, let's set the budget number right now. By law, we can't spend over that number, but we can always spend less than the number if the revenues don't come in, and we can leverage some of our unassigned fund balance money in order to maintain some educational soundness as the year goes on. So again, these next slides you've all seen from previous presentations, so I'm just gonna go through real quickly. Our goals are always the same. We want to improve or maintain our programs, and we want to stop reductions to staff. I'm not sure we can completely have zero reductions by the time the school year starts. We'll have to see whether or not the state, A, borrows money, and the state normally does not borrow money to make itself whole. That would, that's a very unusual thing, but they are going to borrow at least $10 billion in this fiscal timeframe. Secondly, the federal government could come through with more stimulus. If they do, some of that will trickle down to schools, and it may prevent us from having to lay people off. So the fiscal reality is the tax levy at the cap, and we are not recommending going over the cap. 2021 is a different story, but this year, we don't think that's necessary. The capped levy will provide us with about $1.5 million of revenue. We're counting on, you know, another $1 million of other sources, including some state aid, Medicare, sales tax, et cetera. But the capped levy and the New York State aid will not allow us on its own to balance the budget. The additional $300,000 that we have in there as a placeholder right now for potential hiring of mental health supports or some other type of teachers, Rick or I would not recommend that it's prudent to hire any new staff over this summer. Rick, you want to chime in on anything there?
Yeah, until we really know what these cuts are, 10 billion to 15 billion on the state's budget of 178 billion is anywhere from a 5.6% to an 8.4% cut. If we were cut 8%, we would really have to take a hard look and see that 200,000 to 300,000 that we have as some flexible spending for those additional positions. We don't want to have to fill something and then reduce somebody. So those are positions that, you know, as that second wave of cuts goes, and you see where the the businesses are, we might be able to have a better better feel for it.
There's some things we're gonna have to do regardless in order to maintain educational efficacy, and we'll talk about that at the end. So just real quickly, we've gone through the expense assumptions before, anywhere from 1% to 3% on the particular categories. We've gone through the revenue assumptions. Highly likely, we won't get all the sales tax that we've that we put into this budget as an estimate. It's highly likely we won't get all the state aid that we put in. As of right now, the Medicaid reimbursement appears to be the same. Do you have any other information on that, Rick?
No, the Medicaid increase, I think, will still be as we budgeted. Even when we budgeted the 2% increase in sales tax, the comptroller just before we did the budget came out with a report saying you could budget an estimated almost 9% increase in sales tax. We took the conservative approach, and the 2% we may not hit that, but I think it's a much more honest number than if we would have used that 9% to begin with.
Rick, I know that the $518,000 increase is over state aid, but the numbers that the governor sent out was a little bit different. So traditionally, do we come in lower, higher? How, how, over like five-year, on the five-year history, how is that work for Clarence?
Governor came out with is the number that we have budgeted. What's deceiving sometimes is the governor isn't looking at our last year's budget. He's looking at a guess on what he thinks the actual aid for the current year will be. And he's saying that your aid for the current year, if you look at his number, is about a million dollars difference. But when we take a detailed analysis, we notice that his estimate of our transportation aid is about $600,000 less than we anticipate getting. And his estimate of the BOSI's aid is a couple hundred thousand dollars off. So his million-dollar difference from what he thinks we were gonna get until to what he's saying we'll have next year isn't our budget to budget. It's his guess of an actual compared to a budget. So our budget of the 1920 year that we're in, and compared to the 2021 year, the 2021 year, we put in the governor's actual number. Now, the state aid never comes in perfectly. And if you look at it historically, it's up and down, up and down compared to the governor's proposal. But it's it's gonna be close enough to that governor's proposal. We never really get more if the legislature by April 1 hasn't thrown something into it.
So when do we get that actual number? Because it it looks like we're budgeting 518,000, but the the actual run show a million, so there's a big difference there, and if it comes in a little bit closer.
No, 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 that's not, no, the million, again, isn't our budget to budget. He's saying the million is from his estimate of what we might get this year.
So then when do we get the actual numbers in August then? Is that what I read someplace?
Yeah, most of the time, at the end of June, the auditors and our district treasurer go through 1,000 reports, and we come up with all the estimates of what we're gonna end up getting. And all those numbers get changed literally 10, 20 times throughout the year as they they audit all of the pages of financial reports that we send them. However, you look at it, though, the 518,000 is what we have budgeted this year to what he's actually saying his best estimate is for next year. So we've got the highest amount in there for state aid, according to his run. It's just deceiving. He's not taking budget to budget. He's taking budget to an estimated actual.
So traditionally, we usually, we get about that amount, not more? Historically, I would say?
I would say historically, we we seldom are above the governor's estimate.
But we're often below. Rick, can I ask you to go back to the sales tax estimate? I know the slide said a 2% increase in sales tax year to year. That's what we usually budget. Did I hear you right? You said that the comptroller said we could count on or estimate 9%?
Yes, one of the things that early on in the budget process, the comptroller said, sales tax revenue is coming in around 9% higher. And it was prior to all of this happening, it was one of the things that we kind of had in the back of our mind, if if things were going well, that maybe we could even increase the sales tax budget a little bit. But we only did the historical 2% increase.
What, what, what dollar amount is that 2%? What's represented in that 2% the dollar amount?
So 2% is going to be right around $100,000.
Okay, cuz I cuz I mean, with a lot of things shut down, it could be flat or or worse. And I just wondered, you know, if we we have a plan for that.
Yeah, our our plan is the same as the plan that we're gonna have for the governor's cuts. If our revenues come in much, much lower, which really it's it's the sales tax and and the state aid, then then we may come to you and say, well, we we can't keep all of the staff. We do have to make some expenditure reductions to cover that. In a combination, the first thing we would do is take a look at the fund balance, as Dr. Hicks mentioned, and say, look, we can still cover some of this because of our fund balance.
Okay.
I'm sorry, go ahead.
No, thank you. I just want to thank you.
One other quick question with regards to the sales tax. We have a schedule for the state aid when we might know it's short of expectations. Do we have pre-timed increments where we have a sense on what's going on with the sales tax as well?
Sales tax comes in quarterly. Every once in a while, on the monthly financial update, if the sales tax comes in a little higher or lower, I'll put a note in there that sales tax came in at budget or a little bit higher. So it's basically a quarterly return of funds. So every quarter, we will look at it. We will know how we're doing compared to last year. We'll know how we're doing compared to our budget.
Thank you.
I'll just keep going with the last couple of slides real quickly, and then we'll open it up for any more questions at the end. Things don't change with our with our levy percentage. We're still at 2.99%. That's at the cap level. Things don't change with our estimated tax rate either. We're estimating at this point $14.18 per thousand. We fully believe it will come in under that despite the coronavirus. So again, $28 on $100,000 home, 56 on a $200,000, 84 on a $300,000 home.
So Jeff, on on the housing piece, has there been, have there been any conversations with the town about the slowing of, you know, growth on the on the on the tax base? It's probably too early to be to be sure, but I'm just, I'm just wondering if there's if there's any sense that that's gonna slow down as well.
Rick, you want to speak there?
I would doubt that going forward, a year from now, that growth factor would be a little lower than we would have anticipated because of this. Since the growth factor is a full year back, at least we know that this year's estimates are solid.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so again, $88.2 million, we'd like to set the number tonight. The three-part budget is something that's mandatory, and we will have it on the postcard and also in the budget newsletter. We're very close to being completed with the budget newsletter, and I'll send it to the board this Friday, or maybe even a little earlier, so that you can take a look at the articles and all the numbers that are in there. Again, we're still going to stay with the bus purchase as well as as a separate resolution. It's a little bit less than it has been over the past three or four years. These dates are not set yet. So we're right now at April 6. We're recommending the adoption of the budget. We'd still have an opportunity to call an emergency meeting if some really strange, weird things happen. May 4 will no longer be the public hearing. That's that's, the public hearing is determined by day prior to the budget vote. Am I correct, Rick?
Yes, it's basically two weeks before the budget vote.
And then June 1 is just a placeholder. It's likely to be later. We heard rumor that it's gonna be June 9. But if the social distancing stuff doesn't stop by then, and, you know, God forbid, we're out of school for the entire year, it could get moved even later in June or even into July. So we don't have any indication on that. Rick, you don't have any knowledge of that, do you?
No, basically the same kind of rumors in essence.
So along with that, petitions for the Board of Education will probably also be extended. They were set to expire on the 20th of April. They, they're going to have to be moved and moved up a little bit. Rick, any information on that that you've heard?
No, no, nothing new.
Okay. So I'm gonna unshare here. And we'll just open it up right now, and if anybody, you've had really, really good questions. Dawn, the questions you sent in were excellent. If you have any additional questions that you want us to go over, now would be the time on the adoption.
Is there an advantage to waiting for, uh, to adopt the budget?
Um, I don't know if there's an advantage. Rick, you want to take that?
See, any advantage, um, and the only thing that would have, would, would change that is if we ever thought of going over the tax cap. You know, then you could make some different moves with revenues. But right now, adopting the budget at this level, um, will not change the tax levy at all. That will stay the same no matter when we do this because we're just going just under the cap. And, and you know, that's the directive, that's where we want to be. Um, and doing it now at this level gives us the most flexibility. We could still cut spending if we need to, or we can look at balances. Um, we could look at, um, the, the TRS money that had some excess in it. And we could look at anything we want to because we have the opportunity. If our budget drops from the 88 million that we're proposing, should things work out well with balances and cuts and potentially additional, uh, call it stabilization funds from the federal government, we still cannot overspend the budget regardless of excess revenues that may come in. So this budget now gives us the most flexibility. And, um, again, as long as we are planning on staying under the cap.
So there's two things that could happen at the state level. One, the state can borrow a very large amount of money and neck fill their deficit that way. And go ahead and distribute school aid as it's been approved in the state budget. Uh, the second thing that could happen is there could be additional federal bailouts. It's likely there will be at least a fourth federal bailout. Whether or not the money will be targeted towards education, we don't really know. But right now, the people who lobby our, our, um, New York State Senator, and we don't have a congressman unfortunately, but the people who lobby are the feds. They're the ones that can print the money and hand it out. Um, the state's going to be in trouble. We would like to try to get through the year without reducing staff. I don't know if we're going to be able to do it. And certainly the board will know prior to the beginning of the school year whether or not the recommendation is going to be to reduce spending because the revenues have also been decreased. But we do think that we have fund balance that we can leverage against these particular cuts. The real problem is 2021.
2122.
I'm sorry, 2122. Thanks, Rick. The, there's an enormous problem in 2122. It's just like it was in 2007, 2008, and in the last, uh, the last one where we had to do the big budget cut in 2013, I think, 2012, 2013. Last time we went through the two recessions. Uh, it's an issue. The one thing that we are doing next year is we open up the teacher's contract. Now, some people would look at that and say, that's an absolutely horrible time to be negotiating because the state's out of money and the district is out of money. We could look at it as an opportunity. If the teachers were really willing to freeze, now remember, they, they didn't last time, okay? But if they really were, um, we might be able to save positions and educational soundness and things like that. So I'd rather be negotiating at that time with the opportunity to, uh, with the opportunity to, to do something rather than have all of our expenses fixed.
I, I, this is James. So we, if we vote now, we lock ourselves in. And I'm not saying I want to go above the cap. And then certainly, I mean, there are a lot of things going against us because you're going to have record unemployment, you've got people not working. And I don't know if asking the community for more money at this point, that requires a 60% vote is a good thing. I just, I, I'm concerned because it, it looks like it's only going to get worse. And how much bigger is the number going to be the year after? I mean, it, it, I'm, I'm, I guess I'm torn. Do, do, do we, we know we're going to have a problem the rest of this year? I mean, you know, unless, unless a miracle happens, and then next year it's just going to be compounded.
Yeah, it's going to be difficult in 2122, James. But no matter what we do, it's going to be difficult in 2122. Um, you know, we're, we're looking at a start point that is pretty far away from where we are as a start point right now. And we don't want to keep using fund balance as a trigger. But, you know, in a single year to save some things, it's worth using some of it because we've accumulated it and that's what it's really there for.
So, sorry, go ahead.
If the state comes up with a budget reduction throughout the year at what their estimated as of today maximum is of 15 billion, you know, that would be, um, just around $1 million. Now, that $1 million is something that, you know, our fund balance, we wouldn't have to lay off staff for one year. But then again, in the 2122 school year, we would have to take a look at it if we decided to either go over the cap or to, um, make some staff reductions. Or as Dr. Hicks mentioned, you know, um, uh, have some freezes for wages. That could easily take care of those. So this year, I still don't see as an, as an issue. And the flexibility of spending, um, is there at the 88 million.
We're all trying to guess. Um, I meet with the Erie County superintendents three times per week on one of these conference calls just to keep up with the pandemic stuff. Everyone's trying to guess what is the potential worst case scenario for 19, for 2021? And what's the worst case scenario for 2122? You know, Rick just pegged a number at $1 million as a potential worst case scenario in 2021. I'm saying it could potentially go higher. Um, I think the absolute worst case scenario is a million and a half to 2 million. If it really, if revenues really did come in a million and a half to 2 million for Clarence lower, we would have to, prior to the beginning of the school year, make some reductions in staffing. We can't cover it all with funding. So it, but we have the flexibility to do that if you adopt the budget.
So in the context of, uh, the remainder of this year, right? So do we have any concerns? The, the scenario that's playing in my head is, um, we were going, doing well with sales tax, maybe ahead of where we thought we would be, but then the rug got pulled out. So some of the, uh, sales tax revenues might be kind of where we're used to about now. Are there, is there a, a situation where because of increased costs or decreased revenue at the tail end of this year, that our fund balance isn't where we want it to be leading into next year? Like, is that, is that a likely occurrence? Is there?
It's, it's a good question. The, the state aid is already set because of the state's budget ending in March for the, the year that we're going to be covered. So that'll be fine. Sales tax, we just got a sales tax check in a quarterly amount that is exactly where we budgeted for this year. So the last quarter of this year could come in lower than we, um, budgeted. But even if it did, sales tax, one quarter being reduced will not adversely affect the, uh, the fund balance at this point.
Okay, it's a, it's a, it's a small enough piece.
It is.
Is it also fair to say that we're going to be saving on expenses between now and whatever time school opens as well?
Yes, it's, it's absolutely fair. I mean, think about fuel, um, transportation costs in general. Uh, think about utilities. Uh, all these things are likely to be much lower than what we had. We're going to end up with a surplus. We've talked before about what do you do with the surplus? Um, should we pre-purchase and do things like that? Or should we just take the surplus and plop it right into the unassigned fund balance to have additional money in order to make these, um, adjustments as time goes on? And we'd probably recommend, and Rick, please chime in. We'd recommend instead of doing pre-purchasing this year, instead of doing, um, that kind of thing that we normally would do, we dump all the money into the fund balance so that we have more flexibility for both years after.
Certainly, that sounds like a, a, a good idea. There are very few things that we pre-purchased that we absolutely need to pre-purchase, um, going forward. You know, if, if we didn't buy musical instruments for a year, um, we would be fine. Um, we, there are some, um, uh, parts of our technology that we do need. Uh, but, but many of them are refreshing, uh, equipment, and that refreshing doesn't have to take place this year. Um, so there are a lot of things like that that, um, throwing into the fund balance makes a lot of sense.
And just one more thing.
Excuse me, Jeff, is our, um, carryover similar to what we have last year, I'm assuming?
We don't know the carryover yet, Dawn, but we think it's going to be a little bit higher than last year.
Okay, so that, but then that's a benefit, it's a big benefit for us.
It is very huge.
If we, if we don't, if we don't pre-purchase and we plop it all in fund balance, it provides even more flexibility. So, um, I had something in my head, but I've had so many of these meetings, I can't recall it. So I'm going to keep on moving. Any other, any other, any other budget question?
I've, I have a couple, um, just real quick. Um, the 10 million grant for mental health that you mentioned, typically because of the wealth ratio, what have you, we don't qualify. Do we feel like we could compete for that?
Um, they don't have the RFP out yet, Mike. But when they do, Kristin will study it. And if there's any way we can get any of the money, we will go for it.
Okay, um, the, the elimination.
Collaborate like we did, um, in previous years with like, uh, maybe Depew and have Kristin work with them. I know we still got grants previously based on collaboration with other districts.
Yeah, we're going to whole hog it because there's going to be people clawing after that 10 million. If they don't cut it, okay? So again, they can cut that.
Um, the, the elimination of the pay time off on the election day. Uh, one thing that we switched with the calendar was that is a staff development day. But I don't think it's your ideal staff development day. Is there potentially, do we want to consider changing the calendar?
Kristin, did you already book people for next, um, election day? Kristin, can you hear it?
Yeah, I'm, I'm muted. But, um, yes, we already did book, uh, for, for next year. Um, we are in the early stages of planning for staff development day. So if that's something that we want to take a look at and, and potentially change, it's something we, we should probably do soon.
Thank you. Um, with the governor, with this adjustment, uh, with that he has the ability now clawback funds. I, as I recall, last year's budget cycle, that was, um, I'll just call it a power that he was looking to, uh, get enacted as part of the budget. With them doing it this year, do we know if it was a one-time event? Or is that something that he has going forward to the governor's office?
We think it's one time, Mike. Just like we think that if there's cuts, they could potentially be one time. We think the pandemic adjustment might be a one time. But we thought that about GEA at the old days too, and it stayed for, you know, almost seven years. Um, you know, one of the things here that's going to be really important to discover is what is the formula they will use to make additional cuts? I know for a fact it won't be the same as the one they used for the pandemic adjustment. The pandemic adjustment was a straight money grab. A billion dollars coming from the feds, a billion dollars taken away. The only federal money that people get are Title I money and special ed money. So they either were going to use the special ed formula or the Title I formula to distribute it. So they used the Title I formula. I can just tell you, a district like Depew, much smaller than us, there, there are a million dollars in that amount. You know, for us, using that Title I formula helps because we don't get a lot of Title I. Going forward, they won't use that formula. Back in 1990, they used a straight percentage of what was called general operating aid back then. It's now called foundation aid. They don't want the cuts to be as regressive as they would be with just straight percentages. They'll want to cut people like us more, I would imagine, than cities and high need districts and things like that. And that's why I think the potential downside number for us could be higher, depending upon what the legislature and the governor want to do. If they just went straight percentage, that doesn't hurt us nearly as bad as it hurts somebody like the city of Buffalo. But we don't know. But you will, prior to, you'll know on April 30th, uh, if you need to come back and revisit anything.
Okay, uh, and then I guess the last question, you've addressed it, but I just want to reiterate. Um, adopting the budget tonight puts us in a position to signal what we intend to do with the going up to the levy, but not above managing any discrepancies with funding at the state level through, uh, the use of the fund balance that we've been able to build up over the last few years, controlling spending uh, over the balance of this year, rolling it forward, um, and, uh, cuts as needed. Um, but we do still have a window that we could revisit it if need be, based on what news may come out over the next one week, one month. Um, as long as we're 45 days in advance of the actual, uh, budget vote date, correct?
When they said that, yes, and, um, we'd have to wiggle it in there, okay? It would be early May probably, like first week of May where, that you'd have to do it.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Okay, that concludes the budget report.
All right, thank you, Dr. Hicks. Um, I guess moving forward with the agenda, Mr. Mancuso, the finance section?
Sure, um, the, the next, uh, item is to approve the property tax report card and the budget, um, as Dr. Hicks presented. The property tax report card, as the date may change when it has to be entered, we always wait till the last day anyway. Um, so typically, right around the 20th of April, we would enter it as you see it, uh, before you. Should that date change, um, obviously, Dr. Hicks and I will be in contact with the board and, uh, keep you apprised of, if there's anything that we really do need to have a meeting for. But it doesn't appear that that will be the case. So, uh, I've got the property tax report card and the budget for you to approve tonight. Um, the other item that we have is the internal audit. Management Advisory Group did the internal audit this year, uh, as they've done in the past. Um, the, the audit is there. Uh, the only real recommendation that they had was a report that we always gave the board in prior years, but it, but it's been a while since we've given it to you. It is a report though, just like many of the ancillary reports that we keep, uh, that we have to update and keep as a requirement, um, to show how the, um, uh, reserves are going. So that's in here. It, uh, the reserve analysis shows you the, um, debt reserve. And that is certainly the reserve that, um, will also help, uh, ball us out should the cuts, uh, be high like Dr. Hicks might have, uh, thought.
Okay, thank you. And does, uh, any board member have any questions of Mr. Mancuso? Hearing none, um, we have before us.
I have one.
Nope.
I, just going back, so there's no official date when, uh, petitions are due? They should just, people should just watch the website?
Yes, absolutely. There's no date.
Um, if no, uh, questions, um, we have before us, um, two items for approval. The 2021 budget, uh, property tax report card, uh, which would set the, uh, uh, tax levy at 2.99%. Um, with the understanding that we still have a little bit of, uh, lead time based on when the final budget date is set to revisit that. If, if warranted, based on any, any changes in the environment, further changes in the environment. And then the internal audit report. Um, so can I get a motion to approve F1 and F2?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, I'm just going to do a roll call vote. Uh, all those in favor, Mr. Stock?
Aye.
Uh, Ms. Sanders?
Aye.
Mr. Piori?
Aye.
Mr. Boglioli?
Aye.
Ms. Snyder?
Aye.
Ms. Sweeney?
Aye.
And I'm an aye as well. All right, thank you. Um, moving on to the next item on the agenda, personnel, Mr. Michelle, instructional?
Uh, instructional, we have the retirement of one teacher and a resignation of a stipended position. We have one appointment that's just an addition to the spectator sports per diem list. Um, P3 contains presentation compensation for professional development. P4 has tenure recommendations tonight, it's for your review. So those three teachers are to be reviewed this month and then acted on next month. And we actually have one addition to our substitute list.
Does anybody have any questions on the instructional section? Hearing none, can I get a motion to approve items P1 to P5?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, uh, Mr. Stock, um, all those in favor, Mr. Stock?
Aye.
Ms. Andrews?
Aye.
Mr. Piori?
Aye.
Mr. Boglioli?
Aye.
Ms. Snyder?
Aye.
Uh, Ms. Sweeney?
Aye.
And I'm an aye as well. All right, non-instructional?
Non-instructional, we have four resignations, three of which. Non-instructional, we have four resignations, three of which are teacher aides for retirement purposes. P7 is an extension of an unpaid leave of absence for medical purposes. P8 outlines the tier system that we use for confidential stipends for secretaries. They're primarily in the district office. That typically is updated when we're updating the CSEA contract because it aligns with the longevity that affects about 13 members. And P9 has two deletions from the substitute list, which we had hired most people.
Thank you. Any questions on non-instructional? Seeing none. Can I get a motion to approve items P6 to P9?
I'll make a motion.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you. So all those in favor, roll call. Mr. Stock?
Aye.
Ms. Sanders?
Aye.
Mr. Piori?
Aye.
Mr. Boglioli?
Aye.
Ms. Snyder?
Aye.
Ms. Sweeney?
Aye.
And I'm an aye as well. Okay, thank you, Mr. Michelle. Dr. Hicks, I guess we're on to special needs and student activities? Jeff, you're muted.
Dr. Hicks, you're muted.
33 CSE, 32 CPSE, and just a shout out, we continue to do CSE meetings over the break using this technology that you're in right now, and people are absolutely stepping up to the plate. We've got teachers doing things at 7 o'clock at night, psychologists, because it's more convenient for parents. Mary Ellen has done a really good job with this, but the ones that are on there are all annual reviews.
Thank you. That's great to hear. Does anybody have any questions on S1 or S2? Could I get a motion to approve S1 and S2, please?
Some of them.
So I have a first. Do I have a second as well in there?
Yeah.
All righty. So roll call. All those in favor, Mr. Stock?
Aye.
Ms. Andrews?
Aye.
Mr. Piori?
Aye.
Mr. Boglioli?
Aye.
Ms. Snyder?
Aye.
Ms. Sweeney?
Aye.
And I'm an aye as well. Thank you. All right, we have one item under Board Development?
5676 Privacy, Student Data Privacy, second read through. We're recommending that you approve it tonight.
Does anybody have any questions or comments on Policy 5676?
Just so everybody knows, the big conferencing app that's out there is Zoom. It's had all kinds of issues, pornography and other things. We have not used Zoom because it didn't meet the standard. We use Google Meet and we use Microsoft Teams.
All right, if there's no discussion, could I get a motion to approve B1, the update to the Board of Ed policy manual?
I'll make a motion, Mike.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
All right, thank you. So roll call vote. All those in favor, Mr. Stock?
Aye.
Mrs. Andrews?
Aye.
Mr. Piori?
Aye.
Mr. Boglioli?
Aye.
Ms. Snyder?
Aye.
Ms. Sweeney?
Aye.
And I'm an aye as well. All right, thank you. All right, second public comment. Obviously, we're going to forego that this evening. Unless there's somebody on here that I'm not aware of, but seeing as we're not using Zoom, I think not. So in, in our packet, we have a schedule of upcoming meetings. Actually, I do have a question on that. Do we know on the BOSI's budget vote April 21st? Has that been delayed as well?
It has.
Go ahead, Rick.
The last I heard, there wasn't.
If, this would require you to add to this agenda, but I spoke with the BOSI Superintendent today. They're allowing Boards of Education to vote yes on, on any day within the month of April, given the pandemic. If I do it while you're all here tonight and you just want to make a motion to change the agenda and vote yes on the BOSI's budget, it could be a lot easier.
But, but only if we vote yes?
We're allowed to do it, though.
Does, does anybody have any thoughts, concerns about getting that, amending the agenda and doing that this evening?
Nope.
Okay. I guess, would somebody like to make a motion to amend the agenda and add the BOSI's budget vote as an action item?
I'll make a motion.
Ms. Snyder, do I have a second? Do I hear Mr. Piori? Would you second?
I'll second.
All right, thank you. All right, so before us, we would be voting to approve BOSI's budget for the next school year. All those in favor, Mr. Stock?
Aye.
Mrs. Andrews?
Aye.
Mr. Piori?
Aye.
Mr. Boglioli?
Aye.
Ms. Snyder?
Aye.
Ms. Sweeney?
Aye.
And I'm an aye as well. Okay, thank you. All right, so I guess back to the agenda. The last, the next meeting we will regularly have scheduled right now is May 4th. At this point in time, it will not be the public hearing, as Dr. Hicks mentioned earlier. And we'll set the public hearing date at a later time based on when the actual budget vote will be held. Any other questions or comments before we adjourn the meeting tonight?
Thanks, but would we have our regular Board of Ed education meeting on May 4th?
We are scheduled to have a regular meeting, correct?
Thank you.
Regarding the kind of end of year events, are we just, are we canceling them or are we just postponing them? Or is there, is there any plan for that yet?
We're suspending them. They're all, anything in April canceled, anything beyond April suspended. We're really, I have no idea what's going to happen with the coronavirus and letting us back in. I feel really, really badly for our senior kids. They miss out on an enormous amount of stuff. And we may have to consider some really creative things for graduation should these kids have the school closed for the rest of the year.
I've got, I've got one at home, Jeff, who keeps asking me, he's hoping he gets back to school in May. And who would have ever thought that that's what I'd be hearing?
I really, really, I think it would be so helpful for us to have these kids back. And I, you know, whatever the medical people say, they say and will do. But for these kids to be able to get a prom in and to get their, you know, to get their graduation in would be an enormous deal for them. And they're really hurt by this whole thing. We're, we're holding out. We've even held on to the costumes for the guys before. Just in case we can get everything in. So we'll see.
That'd be great. Okay. Anybody else have anything? If there are nothing, I'd entertain a motion to adjourn our meeting this evening?
I'll make a motion.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. And the final roll call of the night. All those in favor, Mr. Stock?
Aye.
Mrs. Andrews?
Aye.
Mr. Piori?
Aye.
Mr. Boglioli?
Aye.
Ms. Snyder?
Aye.
Ms. Sweeney?
Aye.
And I'm an aye as well. Thank you, everyone. Have a good night.
Thank you.
Thank you. Stay well, everybody.
Thank you.